Walter Watson to come up and lead us in prayer.
Good being here tonight. Good to know that we serve God, good to know that we put it first. That's how we make it through difficult decisions. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for our city. We thank you for the years of service, Lord, that you've granted us to serve. We thank you for those that serve now. We thank you for the difficult decisions. They help us to lean on you and ask for your guidance. Tonight, Lord, we pray, as always, you will guide us, give us direction, and let us come out on the blessed side. We just thank you for our community and the people that serve. May we always put you first. May we always seek your guidance. May we always act with you in Jesus' name.
Place the flag.
So, look. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good to see everybody out tonight for our evening council meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carried. Paid bills. Has everybody had a chance to look over the paid bills? Hey, got a motion and a second to pay the bills? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carried. Moving right along. Okay. We have a very interesting topic tonight. I know a lot of folks are anxious to talk about. It's something that we decided to put out there on the agenda and get some public comment about, get some feedback, and have some council discussion about it. Things like this, it's not something you want to do hastily. But when there's a need, we want to fulfill all the needs of the city and do what we've been put here to do. And that's to do the best of our ability to make Fort Payne great, move it forward. So, I guess I will open up the floor for any comments from the audience. Any comments from anybody up here?
I think one of the things that needs to be straightened out right off the bat is, we're going to have to make this decision. A lot of people think that we're trying to go out here and stimulate comment on a public vote for this. This is a decision that we, as a body, are going to have to make. We're just trying to get a comment from the public, pro and con, ideas and thoughts. But this is a council decision, and we're the ones that are going to have to make that. So, I want to clear that up, right? Because I've had several people say, well, when are we going to vote on it? Well, we're going to vote on it, and it's on us to do this. And that's why we're trying to take great pains to do the right thing. So, I just want to put that out there, and then I'll be quiet for a while.
We just want everybody's input. We want to know what you, as citizens, think. And we just want to be there to do the right thing. Anybody got any comment on the proposed one-cent sales tax?
Pro or con?
Pro or con? And I would ask you to come up to the microphone, please.
Oh, I am. When I drove up here, I was expecting to have a part of the first pass of church. And you can look in here, how many people are here? Tells me one thing. People are supporting this move. If they don't support it, they're going to come up here and oppose it. But I can give up the people that are here and so are these people, oppose it. But the vast majority of people, if they were going to oppose it, they would be up here, you know, doing that. I personally know I'd have to pay more taxes. But I think it's better for our city at this time. Drive all around, everybody paying 9%. And we're... The mayor of Congress was in office. He said, Dave... When he went into office, it was nine years ago. That is 9% then. Just think, in nine years, how much money we've lost by being at 8% instead of 9%. That's all I can say.
Thank you, Steve.
First, nowhere on the left.
I appreciate you guys. I've said where you are, and it's a difficult decision to make. I got my sales paper here. I just got some of my sales papers. Princes actually got through their cell, and we're going to leave here and go there. Just watching, often asking, we've asked the question, when is the right time? When is the right time? And that's kind of plagued us for a long time. When is the right time? I vote for guys about trend lines. When you see certain things happen, it's the time to take action. I just want to start with some of the things that I saw. Johnny and I, we've been on this for a long time. We survived through the stock mill industry being strong, and we had a little revenue. But then it started to trickle down a little bit. And Johnny and myself asked the question, when is the right time? Also, it was difficult to make the decision because we're politicians. I mean, we got to be re-elected. We're trying to figure out what the people are going to think. I just want to keep it real with everybody. You know, we don't know what they're going to think. We need to keep these guys in office, but they got to make a tough decision. That's real. But when you see trend lines going, and this, I got this from the numbers. I appreciate Wade digging it up and all the counties, everybody kept up with it. When a gentleman came to us that did our audits and said, if you continue to go in this direction, you're going to find yourself in bad shape. At that point in time, I got a little anxious. Everybody knows that I would say it's time now to actually make this move. In 2010, when everything was said and done for that year, the numbers may be off a little bit, but they're pretty close. There was a $5 billion surplus that we had to get. We had to get and use that. Okay? We're okay. About 2011, $800,000. 2012, $1.4. 2013, $1. 2014, $975,000. This is minus. Then we really got together, we worked on it really hard. And Andy and Jesse, they worked on it really hard. They got us down to $267,000 amount. And now it's back up again, $1.1 billion. These trend lines, I hope that the data can actually tell us when to do it. The data is telling us now that you need to do something. Because if you continue on this path, if we raise it then, you're just going to be surviving with it. It's time to do it now and invest in it. You guys will have, I think the greatest challenge would be after you do it, to have people like Johnny on board that's going to squeeze every penny, to be sure that you guys watch what's going on. I know we got... When I chose to have an appointed school board, I took responsibility for that, those actions. That means that school partly belongs to me. I know we need to support them. First things first, we need to get the city stable. I think the last time we talked about it, Steve's got some excellent ideas that he presented. I think we need to go forward with that. But the first thing we need to do is get the city stable. Things like, make sure that we have enough to survive on. We need four months. What is it, $1.2 million a month? What is it? Somewhere around there. We need at least four months, you know, just to have some surplus that we say we can survive if we have four months. We don't have that. You know? So, I would hope that we would make the decision not based on just data. Just data-driven. It's time to do it. And it's time to watch it when it's done. I think we need to tell the school, once we get the city stabilized, and we stabilize, we'd like to know what that is, then we'll come and help you with the project. But until that time, you guys got to make sure, in my opinion, that we stabilize the city of Fort Payne first. Stabilize, I mean, make sure we're solid. We're not borrowing money. We're not cashing CDs. We're not doing things to make the payroll. We're putting that money aside, and we're making these guys' life, these guys' easy to be able to do the job. So, it's time. If we wait, I don't know what we're waiting for. So, I know we got, I know how everybody sits up here. And I appreciate Mr. Taylor for his watching carefully, very cautious. You know, we need to make sure this is the right time to do it. I want to really encourage him, if in any way possible, I think this is the right time. Johnny also for, has been, I mean, he can get the best deal in town for things that he did. And I appreciate that, but he's conservative. I know he's conservative. But I would ask him also, please consider, I think this is the time that we need to make this decision and do it right. I think the citizens will stand up behind us. Wade, thanks for doing all the work, getting out there and just putting it all together. Because the information you got is a no-brainer. So, please. Please, guys, think about this. Lynn, thanks a lot for your... For what you do to make it work. Don't give up, guys. Just push it through. Make it go. The citizens will appreciate, will thank you for it ten years down the road. They may not understand now, but we're visionary. So, we see what's going on down the road, make a decision, and they'll appreciate you for it. Thanks a lot for your time, and I'll continue to do it.
Thank you for all of that.
Thank you, Walter. Anyone else?
How y'all doing?
Good, Randall, how are you?
Good, good. Thanks for the opportunity to come for you. As you know, I have been in favor of this for some time, for my time back on the council. Because I believe, back then, three years ago, that it was time. And one of the things that I heard over the four years that I served, and even beyond that now, and you hear it still today, is, we want jobs, we want better jobs, we want better-paying jobs, you know? But we all know what it takes to get there. And currently, we don't have what it takes to get it. We just don't. We don't have the ability to compete with other cities. We've got around, what, $200,000, $212,000, I believe, on our industrial recruitment. I would challenge you to find an industry that will come here for $212,000 and a cent. You're not going to find it. Our school system, that was another key thing. And I said this before. We developed a plan. Walter and I developed a plan that we put before the council three years ago. But the plan that I heard laid out at the work session last week was far better, far better than what we had come up with. So, I believe the combination of having that great plan, having vision, which is what we need, having that vision and having the courage to make the hard decision is what it's going to take. And that's what I challenge you, as the guys, the elected officials sitting here, is to have that courage and have the vision to do what it takes. To take Fort Payne forward. I know that was a big campaign thing, was moving Fort Payne forward. Let's make that reality and not just a campaign slogan. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If you don't mind, you've already heard me once without. School system, we've heard mentioned several times. I wish that I would thank you for even considering this. And I want to tell you, facilities is where we are. And again, I just want to remind you that Williams Avenue is a 1954 model. And we're busting at the seams of those out. If we could have a new third through fifth grade elementary school, that could relieve that pressure. That could also help with pre-K needs that you also have. And also, and we could move fifth grade from Fort Payne Middle School to the new school and relieve the pressure from the middle school. And along with that, just do some additions that would really complement what's going on at the high school. So, your consideration in this is much needed. We really, the students could benefit from it. So, we've got 750 students that would benefit from the facility. It would leave a 54 model to go into a new facility, so.
You'd like to pivot it over?
Yeah, 1954.
That's not a bad year.
That's not a bad year. But I won't tell you how many years ago that was.
Well, just think, that means it's as old as John.
Yeah. That's it, an old school.
Not as old as people.
But thank you for that consideration. Facilities, that's our shortcut around here.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I won't say one, but I think this thing is not going to happen overnight. I think we've got to do a lot of thought, a lot of planning, a lot of talking. We've got to sit down with school board and everything else and try to come up with a plan. And we need to plan what we're going to do, basically. I think everybody's got different ideals. And we've got to sit down and prioritize and go from there, I believe, whatever happens. I'm not sure how, vote yet. I'm conservative. I remember what I said earlier over there in the auditorium. It hadn't been that long ago. I'm going to have to twist my arm and shove it in the back of the head.
I just think we've got to do what's best for Fort Payne going forward. I know we can't keep backing up. We can't keep, you know, borrowing from Peter to pay Paul, so to speak, to make our payroll. And in order to get better things, in order to get... You know, things don't last forever. A lot of our facilities were built in the '80s. That's 30-something years ago. And so, you know, we have to have some source of funding to get that, get those updates made. I do think we need, you know, a strategic plan. Lynn and I have talked with Tony Renta from Birmingham, who was very instrumental in doing some things for Main Street. He's offered to put us a proposal together to see, you know, to put a group together to study this thing and prioritize. He can, he knows where to get grants to where we can facilitate projects that we want to do that will piggyback on other projects that will not cost the city. But in order for us to move forward, we've got to have a funding source. I mean, we've already got a project that is the, with the Alabama Department of Transportation down at the interstate for the two roundabouts and the intersection change there, Jordan Road and Airport Road and 35. You know, we've already committed a million dollars to that project. So, you know, those funds have got to come from somewhere to get those, you know, necessary changes made. So, I look at it as a step in the right direction. You know, taxes have not been changed since, or raised since 1984. I don't know the exact dollar, but I know what minimum wage was in 1985. It was $3.35. Today, minimum wage is $7.25. I don't know how many people in here still make what you made in 1984, but I would bet you that it's not the same dollar amount. And, you know, I think the city has done a tremendous job keeping our taxes low. Sometimes, you know, it's time to look at things and say, you know, are we going to go forward? Are we going to just continue to get by and move things this way and that way? So...
I have a question. We keep talking about we had to have a plan. We had to have a plan. We've heard Wade's plans. That's if we raise taxes. So, I want to ask all of you, if we don't raise taxes, what's your plan to get our cash reserves back up? I mean, I said we took out, what, $6 million in the last five or six years? So, how are we going to get that cash reserve back up? It's a good question, isn't it?
Very good question.
Anybody have an answer?
We have big yards on this, buddy.
Well, you're going to have to start cutting services. You're going to have to start cutting things. And, you know, you already know we're... We try, you know, we try to do the most conservative things as we do. But you're going to have to start cutting services and stuff if we don't find some type of source of income.
So, my next question is, you all just answered it. We don't have a plan to build that cash reserve back up. So, what are we...
We have a plan. We don't spend as much. We bought some new dozers, and we bought $800,000 worth of street lights and things. Our tax, thankfully, has been going up about $300-something thousand a year. You know, this is something that we've got to take all this into consideration.
This reserve was built up over several years. And naturally, whenever we had a downturn in '08, then that was whenever we started to have to use part of the reserve of the years after that. And that was a few years that were still at a reserve, but not as much as it had been in previous years. And that's one reason it's lower than what it... And we've used money out of it.
We bought, I mean, we got two new fire trucks. We got a new pavement machine. We've got new dozer to landfill. We got a new dozer at the street department. $800,000 worth of street lights, which could have been $1.9 million if we'd went a different way.
Yeah, I was in the $800,000 on the street lights was in lieu of a contract at $1.92 million.
Those are financed, are they not?
Yes.
Yeah, they were financed. They would have been financed at $1.9 million. But we financed it. And they'll be paid off in five years, and then they'll have been paying for our electricity.
Yeah, and they'll be paying for their sale.
You know, I'm just throwing some stuff out there.
With a reduced amount of electricity, they will pay for their sale.
And I think you guys have done a great job of doing that.
Well, thank you.
But I don't understand why we have to wait and have a plan. Because if you didn't spend one penny of this for two years and you put this $2.8 million back into our reserves, it'll take us two years just to get back where we were five years ago. So, let's say we don't pave another street. We don't buy anything. We don't build a school. You've got two years that you can just keep putting this money back in the reserve just to get us back to where we were.
Some of that money in reserve was bond money that was put in there. Am I right?
Are you talking, what, in 2019?
Yeah, when we had the $12 million. I think you had bond proceeds of a couple million or so. You know, some of that's a little bit idiot. I'm not saying I'm totally against you. We've got to sit down with school board. We've got to decide what they need, what we can do. I mean, there's lots of things to do. It's not just as easy as passing tasks.
I guess what I'm understanding is, regardless of how we spend it, we need it. Whether we save it, spend it, school, roads, equipment, we need it. That's my two cents.
I'll brag on these guys. They did a great job doing what they had to do with. We bought two fire engines. We got a $300,000 grant for one of them. We paid some money down, and we financed some money to pay for two brand-new fire trucks. We bought a bulldozer. We paid for it out of tax money that was on the highway and traffic fund, I believe. It's paid for. We've got another bulldozer that we got, two mortgages on, is financed. It'll last us longer and will be around. But it's an expensive piece of equipment, but we had to finance it. So, they've done a good job of getting us by with what we had. But our revenues are not matching our expenses. And we cut $1,008,000 last year in one city to balance the budget and pass it with a $68,000 surplus. We had to take much-needed equipment out of that. And we did that to give the employees a raise. Several raises were given individually over the course of the last couple of years before that. But the city employees in total haven't been given a raise in a while. So, we gave a raise a month after getting elected and taking office, which is politically crazy. You give raises to your employees right before election if you want to get re-elected. But that didn't factor into that. We gave them a much-needed raise and took a garbage truck out of the budget to help do that. That was a tough decision. And Monday, when they started up at the landfill, they had three trucks broke down. Had to fix them and get them on the road and go. So, I'm sorry, I'm passionate about this. But we've done as good as we can do. We're cutting money. And I see the 40 people on Facebook. Rocky was optimistic that 50 would jump out here. But there's about 30-some-odd people on Facebook trying to kill us and pass it up with misinformation or lack of information. And this is hard. This is a hard decision to make. But this decision was made last in 1984. And I feel like it's time. I agree with their position. I understand them, and I back them in their right to have that opinion and that decision. But me personally, I think this is the right thing to do. It's absolutely the right time to do it. And I'm ready to move forward slowly, patiently, and diligently. As long as we're moving forward, I'm good with it. And I don't have a problem with anything that's been said here tonight. And that's all I got to say for right now.
Well, I would just like to say, sorry. When we first, the first chance we had to give money to industry, I was horrified that we were going to give them every bit of money we had for their industry to come in to our city. And I'm like, okay, so what do we do if we have another industry right after that come in? We're not going to have any money to give them. And that's a scary thing to do, especially when you hold the responsibility to try to get this industry in here and try to grow your city. And it's almost embarrassing, honestly. I'm just glad, evidently, they knew how much we had in our account. I don't know. But, and then I hear a lot of, you know, things like, well, you know, why aren't you fixing the sidewalks? Why aren't you doing these things? There are a lot of things that we would love to just write a check for and, you know, snap, get those things done. But there's no money for that. And I know that we've cut, and I agree with these guys. I mean, I understand where Red and Johnny have come from. And I respect them, I respect the former council members. I know where you were at when you were trying to run the city in the past. But I have to agree, as a new person, we've got to do something. Something's got to be done to maintain our city going forward. Not only that, but to try to somewhat grow it. We do. We've got to stabilize what's going on now. I know we've bought equipment. We've done this, we've done that. That's always going to happen. I mean, if you own a house, you know there's always upkeep. There's always something to buy. There's always something, you know, that you need to update or improve upon. Same thing here. I don't think that there'll ever be a time where we won't need something and have an expenditure. It'd be great to have that money in the bank and be able to not borrow the money or to not borrow, you know, so that we can make payroll or cash out a CD or whatever. I mean, I just want Fort Payne to be stable and be the best it can be. I agree with Brian, I agree with Wade, and I agree with Johnny and Red, too, kind of from the past of what they've done. And I respect that. But I wholeheartedly think, and honestly, and Brian and I talk about this a lot, I'm not in this position for votes. If someone doesn't vote for me because I voted for sales tax because I believe it's the right thing to do, then don't vote for me again. I'm here to serve the people and be a public servant. I'm not going to vote for something worried about what, who... Who is or isn't going to vote for me my next term?
All right. First of all, I want to say I'm going to discharge my duty as the lawyer for the city of Fort Payne. If you don't pass it, that one-cent sales tax, it's legal. If you do say to pass it, it's legal. Albertville just went to five. Now, I'm going to take that off, and I'm going to go get my citizen hat on.
That's an Auburn hat, right?
It's an Auburn hat. That's right.
That's your meter off.
Meter off. It's always uncomfortable as a lawyer to take a position on an issue. But first of all, I want to say, representing the law board of the city of Fort Payne since 1984, the biggest criticism they ever received was when they floated bond issue and spent $12 million, which is probably the equivalent of $25 million today, to go to the Tennessee River and get water out of the Tennessee River and break into Fort Payne.
the Tennessee River and break into Fort Payne. They were called idiots, they were called wasteful, they were called stupid, and I am telling you, had that not happened, I'm not sure the city of Fort Payne would even be here today, because we came, before it got completed, within two weeks of the entire city of Fort Payne being without water. And now everybody talks about how forward looking the Fort Payne Water Works Board was, and that's where you are now. There's an old saying, if you're in the hole, the first thing you do is quit digging. Guys, it's time to quit digging, you've been digging for six years, and you're not gonna fix it unless you get more revenue, that's the only way you're gonna fix it. The cost of running this city is not gonna go down. Now, if we wanna talk about the reality that Walter talked about, about getting reelected, I'm gonna tell you what I've heard, and I've heard a lot since that work session, if you wanna make sure you don't get reelected, you don't pass this tax. I'm telling the people out there, ready for it, they want it, the question I get, excuse my French, is what the hell took 'em so long? And they wanna talk about the problems they want fixed, they want the sewers fixed, they want Terrapin Hills fixed, they want a new school, and they know they're not gonna get that without money. And if y'all don't pass it, you guys can hang it up.
I'm gonna hang it up anyway.
Well, you don't matter to you, but the rest of you are gonna hang it up if you don't go pass that term. And it's just like she said, you're absolutely right, before you spend one single cent of that money, you gotta have a plan. You need to identify what you're gonna spend it on, you need to identify how you're gonna leverage it, how you're gonna turn that three million dollars a year, two point eight million dollars a year into a fifteen million dollar project or a thirty million dollar project, you don't spend a dime on it till you do that. But there is absolutely no sense, none, fiddle farting around for three or four more months before you pass this thing and losing out on six or seven hundred thousand dollars. And she said, we don't do anything for two years, put it in the bank, get our reserves back up there, so the next time we need a new fire truck, we can pay for it, I don't go borrowing money. Now, some of y'all don't agree with that, and that's not, I'm speaking as your lawyer, I'm speaking as a citizen of Fort Payne, and I am telling you, every single person I've talked to, I have not heard one person, and I did, I told Wade as we left last time, I said, just don't get the syndrome where when fifty people tell you you're being crazy, that you think that means everyone, everybody, remember that means twelve thousand nine hundred and fifty, didn't say that. And Steve, I never have agreed with Steve Brubman before in my whole life, not one day.
He's gone to the bathroom.
Gone to the bathroom, oh, well, I agree with him, we're sorry. Will, you tell me, I said, every word is, I have never, I say, in my whole life, I've never agreed with Steve.
I missed it.
You want one more time?
No, wait.
Tell me when you're ready.
Go.
Never before in my whole life have I agreed with Steve Brubman, I agree with him tonight, you didn't have one single person stand up and say, don't do that, and those are the people that show up, it's time to move on, and it doesn't need to be a month, doesn't need to be a week, you know, it, it needs to happen. Take your money, put it back, put it in the bank, and form your plans, get together with the school board, get together with the sewer.
There he is.
I want you to know, Steve, I just agreed with you, I've never done that before.
Great times.
Great times. Still we're out there a long time, but.
I figured you'd call for a vote tonight.
But I'm just telling you guys, let's get the money coming in, and then let's put together a plan, and let's spend it right, and let's earn Fort Payne from a town that has turned video, and it has. Turned video, let's, let's put it back where it was, and things where we're leading, we can do it. Now I'm gonna back to the lawyer. I go to later.
All right, do we have any, Walter?
Oh, please, please do what Rocky says, this guy doesn't get a vote on it. Don't, don't get mixed up in, I mean, you don't have to tonight, but don't get mixed up in taking your time and passing it and taking your time and figuring out how you're gonna actually distribute it.
That's right.
You know, do it, it, it's time to do it, the longer we wait, the harder it's gonna be. I'm thankful we got Red and Johnny because, I mean, I, I think you got enough votes to do it, they will help you with their conservative, be able to make sure it's done right, so you, you got the right mix up there right now, so just, let's, let's do it, and, and say, this is where we live, this is our home, and I don't like to, I don't like to raise a sewer rate because I don't pay sewer, now I can't, I can't help, I wanna help, I wanna give to support my town, and I think everybody here would wanna do that. I, I'd love to see ten years from now, we got a new school up and, and know that our city is financially strong. You guys serve forever, just do the right thing.
Amen, that's it. I think it's the desire of every individual at this table to, to see Fort Payne move forward, uh, and, and I really, uh, I really think we can do great things, uh, if, if we, you know, but we gotta work together, we got to, you know, agree to disagree sometimes, uh, we're not always gonna agree on everything, but we can agree to disagree and, uh, and go on and get things done. Anybody else got any comments, questions on the, on the tax?
One last thing, real quick, uh, Wade, your time in the fire department, anybody that's here in a medic, you show up and somebody's bleeding, what's the first thing you do? Stop the bleeding, then you figure out how to treat them. We're bleeding, we're bleeding, it's time for us to stop the bleeding, get the money coming in, two hundred and thirty-three approximately, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a month that we're missing out on every month we don't do this. It's time, the time is now.
And one, one other thing that, you know, that I didn't mention, but during the campaign and, uh, and everything, you know, I heard, there was a couple of things that, that came up, uh, more times than, than a dozen, was the, the Matco building, the old hospital. Well, in order to do things with those two properties, it takes money. Uh, we can't just go out there and, and, and do it, you know, and not have the money to do it, so, uh, we gotta, we gotta do something, so.
How are y'all? I'm Ashley Vaughn, and I'm like really nervous to be up here in front of y'all, but I own a business here and I sell real estate here, so I'm not saying I'm for or against the tax at all, because obviously if I own a business, then I want people to come in and shop with me. If I sell real estate, then obviously we need people to come in, I want them to buy all the houses and all of them from me. But in the same regard, you know, I'm a taxpaying citizen here, and so I just really want you guys to really take your time, like you're saying, you wanna sit down and talk to the school board, and talk to everybody and make sure that this is something that is going to be beneficial. I know we're in the hole and all that, but I know if Spotty makes a lot more money, but I keep using my credit card, he can make all the money all day long, but if I'm out there spending it left and right, he can make it all day long, and it's not gonna make a difference in our household at all, besides the fact that he's just keeping us above water. So I just wanna make sure that Fort Payne, because we live here, we grew up here, if we decide to have kids, then they'll be raised here, if I could get Spotty, you know, to let me leave here, but we're stuck here, but, um, 'cause we love it. But anyway, I don't want it to be the best that it can be, obviously for our kids when they, for my nieces and nephew, but I don't want it to be something that just continually gets in the hole and we're just adding, 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 trying to stay above water. So I just really ask, and thank you guys for taking the due diligence, to make sure that just because you get more money doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna keep us out of the hole, if y'all can, you know, and I know y'all done price cuts and whatever, I don't know if that's the right word. Anyway, 'cause I'm nervous, and I use my hands a lot, but just to make sure, like I said, that we're gonna, that money is gonna be used, and it is gonna go forward, and it is gonna get us out of the hole and get us the reserves back and all of that. So that's just all I ask, is that, thank you for doing your due diligence, to make sure that we don't just keep on piling it on. Eh, hope that makes sense.
Thank you. Well, it's just like already been said up here before, you know, they, all of us would like to say Fort Payne, uh, progress and move forward, and then, of course, you know, there, there are five people up here with five different ideals, how to do that, and that's the reason there's not a dictator. And, uh, I mean, if we could hire Rocky to be a dictator, it's a big learning.
I'm cheaper as a dictator and I'm as in thirty.
I wouldn't doubt that, but anyway, yes, that's the way it is, you know, that's the reason there are five people sitting up here. Yes.
Uh, can, uh, can everybody see me? I know I'm just barely, barely able to see the podium here. Uh, my name is Dana, my name is Dan Stahl, my wife and I moved into the area a little over a year ago, I think, or something like that. I, before coming here, I was in the Air Force, um, I was an analyst by trade, and there was an old chief that once told me, um, if you don't track it, it's not gonna get better. Uh, so this is a piggyback on the previous lady, um, you know, fine, we can make the tax, that's, that's great, you know, increase it if you want to, but if we don't have oversight, if we're not watching what we're doing, we could be here in five more years, or two more years, right, and say, well, now we don't have enough money now because such and such and such and such, now we're gonna go to ten, well, I don't know how the incremental system works for taxes here, but, um, I just, you know, I just wanna make sure that we have the oversight that we need to make sure that, hey, you're making good decisions, track what we're doing, see what we're doing, and then, you know, just adjust to the numbers, let the numbers guide you, I think that was what the others gentlemen were saying as well, so that's all I have to say.
That's one thing that Lynn and I really talked about with this, uh, Tony Renta, who was here in our last work session, uh, he can, close your ears just a minute, uh, Rocky. How many knows where Coleman's at?
I don't really know.
Okay, uh, he done a lot of work with Coleman and done a strategic plan for Coleman and stuff, uh, and it works, you know, they, you know, Coleman gets a lot of money, how many of you have been to a ball tournament in Coleman and dropped money over in Coleman? You know, that, that could happen here as well, uh, and, you know, he, he's got the foresight and the, and the, um, the resources to, to look for grants so that we can wisely look at these things and say, okay, we don't need to spend this money for this, we can get a grant for it, but a lot of these grants, you've gotta have matching money for, and you've gotta have that money somewhere. So we would have the money, we wouldn't necessarily spend all of our money, all of our reserve, but we'd have enough there that we could match this grant and get these grants to bring things in that, uh, you know, we've, we've looked at and, and got a plan for, so.
And one of the things I really like and, uh, respect about him and trust about him is like the sewer project, um, it's very smart to do a green space along with that project because of grant monies, and there's a chance that we could get fifty cents back on the dollar that we spend, so why not do it? And there's a lot of tweaking of things, uh, you know, that if we want to do, you know, if you add just this one more aspect to this project, then you then maybe can get a grant, so he has all that knowledge, um, and he was supposed to be here tonight, but he's, uh, traveling and.
He's consulting for somebody else.
Yeah, he's consulting for someone else.
He's in Goldman Sachs.
No, but he has a heart for Fort Payne. There is some property here, Ashley, he was interested in, I mean, that's how vested he is in this area, because as you know, if you move here or ever come here, you know, it's just an endearing place, and, um, I, that's what we're looking at, I think, as a group in doing is hiring, he's actually an urban developer, and, um, he knows much more about it than probably all five of us collectively, and, um, so once we can get his proposal, uh, then we can discuss that and, and look at that plan, because I know whatever he has is much more than I could probably dream of or come up with.
I, I had no idea about the fifty cent money, that, that was so remarkable to hear that you can tie any infrastructure program with a green project, and you potentially could get fifty cents back on every dollar you spend, and if you got an eighteen million dollar sewer project to do all three projects, if you could do that, make that a green space and do that whole project for less than one, one section out of what it would cost, that's, that's crazy to not even look into that. I mean, the, the ability to do things like that, free up money for other things quickly, and you, you take care of two or three things with some of this, if you do the creek cleaning, the green space and the sewer land, that's three projects with one pot of money that eliminates the need for coming back to something else, just by doing it the right way and getting ahead of the paperwork, and he's the guy that generates that paperwork for us. So that was, that was really interesting for me to hear that right off the bat, and there's no telling what all's out there, but he's the guy to, to lead us in that direction.
And as long as I've lived here, we've alw- I've always heard that there's nothing for our kids to do, nothing. I mean, I grew up here, we found things to do, and that's the sad thing now is kids are finding bad things to do and occupy their time with, and, um, you know, if we can build biking, hiking, uh, trails and things like that for them to do, I, I just think it can't do anything but benefit our community and our youth.
Right, that's our future.
Okay, anybody else?
One more.
Two more. Two more.
One more. Wilson, I'm just curious, uh, I've sat here and listened to this whole thing, and everybody's sitting here, and we, we've got the votes tonight, we've got three, then if I'm hearing everybody correctly, we've got three votes, uh, y'all can be here two years from now listening to this, Rangel, I think, is nine percent if I'm not mistaken, Albertville's ten percent, uh, are we gonna be the next Jefferson County, are we gonna be broke, and who are they gonna blame? The council. It's time to make the decision, guys, don't put it off too much, it sounds like a no-brainer debate I've ever, yeah, unless this next person is against it, who, who wouldn't do it? I mean, I don't think it's gonna break anybody, it's, it's time to make a decision, the worst thing you can do is be indecisive or no decision, that's worse than making the decision. Heck, have a vote on it, do it. I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Well, I can't bet on one, I'm just kidding. Uh, this is a subject that I'm very familiar with, I, uh, we had a lot of fun over at the auditorium one night, I remember. One thing I wanna say is this, is how much I appreciate you guys taking on this, you know, this is, uh, you know, some of you already know that this is not a fun subject, you guys need, wouldn't be going into it, and I have to say, I think the plan that you guys have put together is a better plan than what we had before, and that I would probably be more inclined to vote for it than, than I was before. Uh, but, but I wanna, I do wanna say one thing, one argument that I've heard that I don't really like to hear, that I kinda wish you guys would get away from, is that we haven't raised taxes or taxes haven't gone up since nineteen eighty four. Taxes are a percentage of, of the economy, it's an eight percent of the economy, you know, you talk about minimum wage being three thirty-five and being seven thirty-five now, that's a reflection of the economy, it goes up, you know, revenue that we had today is not what we had in eighty-four, it hasn't gone up because of the percentage of the economy. So keep that in mind, and don't raise taxes just because we had it in eighty-four, because using that logic, you know, in a thousand years from now, you know, every twenty years we'll go up, we'll be at a hundred percent, so, but I'm not standing up pretty straight against the sales tax, I think you guys have put a good plan together, and I wanna support you in whatever you do, and I appreciate you looking at it, but I just wanna caution you about the, not raising taxes, you know, because they have, they have risen in the last eight, or six, nineteen eighty-four, appreciate you guys.
Thanks.
I'll leave my time on the clock. Um, I'm Celeste Reagan, and I'm not gonna say I'm for it or against it, because I like to have new things here in town too, and yes, my last child just graduated, but I do have two current boys that are gonna go to school too. What I do wanna say is, when you get that, because obviously we're gonna pass it, you got, you've got enough to do that, when you get that extra penny, I want you to make sure that you spend it correctly, we're not down this road again two years from now, you're asking for another penny, because, well, we've built this over here, or we've added to the school here, maybe we have to do things by, 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 because that's how you eat an elephant, is by, by, by. And, um, And, um, do take in consideration though that, you know, yes, we are Fort Payne, but we also serve the county. When people come from the county, they come to Walmart here in Fort Payne rather than going to Scottsboro, because it's 9% or everything. So just think about that, 'cause not that you're gonna lose a race because you raised a penny this year, but it's gonna be how you spend that money in the long term.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, I'm not gonna say anything, but if Rocky got down here and said something. Uh, of course, I'm Jimmy Durham, and I've heard a lot of people say, well, raise that tax 1%, and you won't get any industry into the area. Well, they're totally wrong. Because if you don't raise the money, you don't have the infrastructure, you don't have the quality of life here in Fort Payne, they're not going to come. And that's how you also make the pie bigger. As Dana mentioned, you wanna increase your sales tax. You want to increase your sales, retail sales. And as you do that, you make that pie bigger, where we don't have to come back and ask for more money later on. But we use, and, and I have to say, I, I know some mention about whether, you know, making sure that y'all spend it correctly. We don't have. You know, I've been around here for a long, long time, and I don't think I've ever seen money misspent here in Fort Payne in ages. I think the县 councils and all have spent money correctly. We have a great city now. Uh, but we gotta keep it great, and we got to continue to grow. We got to provide services. We got to make Fort Payne attractive. We got to have a workforce. That's a big thing right now. It's not necessarily location, but you gotta have a workforce, which can only come about with a good school system. And so it is everything. It's not just one particular thing, but it's everything to make Fort Payne a great city. And, uh, I have to say, we got a great city council to start with, and I think y'all can make this a great city. Uh, again, nobody likes taxes. I figured enough, I thought, well, maybe I should just drive to Rome and Georgia and vice versa if they go up one cent. Well, 45 miles over 45 miles, 90 miles at 50 cents per mile, if you try to figure it out, that means it's gonna cost you $45 to drive to Rome. I'm not sure, I think we're almost taxing maybe 10%. Uh, but you'd have to spend $4,500 to break even for just going over there for one cent sales tax. Where else can you go where the sales tax is cheaper than Fort Payne? So people aren't gonna go other places. Uh, besides, I think people here want to spend their money in Fort Payne. And again, you know, gasoline, gasoline jumps up 35, 40 cents, and nobody yields or screams or anything, I tell the neighbor, I hate that. But, you know, one cent, I don't think will kill anybody. And, uh, you know, I know people say, well, the older people, well, there are advantages that they do have. There are means that they can get funding and services to help them. So I just wanna thank y'all for even bringing this up, talking to them, and y'all did a great, I think, strategic plan. I don't know how much more planning you need to do. Uh, you know, as you get the money, you can review these things and weigh what y'all have put together, and choose which ones you need to do. And you're gonna do it over a long time. You're not gonna spend all that money immediately. So, uh, you know, I trust y'all completely to spend that money for the better of Fort Payne and in the best way, and I don't have a problem with that at all. I, you know, y'all have done a great job with the monies that you've had, probably better than anybody else could have, in providing services and all that you do. So I just want to commend you, uh, from an economic development standpoint. Uh, we support the increase in the tax, and, uh, again, I just want to thank y'all and urge you to go ahead and let it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Scotty Vaughn. You guys already heard my wife earlier. Uh, you know, as she stated earlier, we're heavily invested in the city, you know, her business, both businesses. She runs the construction business. Y'all worked all over this town for 20 years. And, uh, I remember one of the Hoarder, the Hoarder business was wide open, and there was a lot of industry, a lot of money coming through. I would like to see you, when you pass the tax or whatever you guys do with that, don't spend it for about five years, instead of it being a short-term plan. Make it a long-term plan where for future generations, where we don't have to worry about we're gonna build a pickup trash, or we're gonna build a body dozer, and all that stuff. So I know the city's a big working mechanism, has parts that wear out. I see it going to landfill and stuff like that. But, uh, I just encourage you, save it for any day as much as we can. Plan, take as long as you need to take, figure it out. Because you're five people representing about 14, 15,000 people. So you take your time and do what you need to do, do your due diligence, and, you know. If we're, if we're losing money every day, then within five to 30 years, we'll wake up and look at the money, so you can take your time, get a very good plan, be very detailed, and do what you need to do.
Thanks, Scotty.
Hello. Um, I'll introduce myself, but I'm pretty sure y'all already know me. I'm Angie Sugar, and, um, I have One World Adventure, and I do a lot of, um, community outreach, um, do environmental education in schools. Um, and it's a, it's a nonprofit organization, and our donor base is really small in this area. So we have to be, um, we have to be pretty creative in how we bring in income. So what we did five years ago is partner with Soto State Park to offer kind of canoe rentals at Soto Falls. And I was particularly intrigued by, um, the plan with the green space and the bike trails and all that, because, you know, I've been working with them there the last three years on, on bike trails, trying to, trying to turn, um, the city into a bike town. And, you know, the old saying is, you know, build it and they'll come. And I just wanna give you an example of, um, our business, how it grew visitorship to Soto State Park over the past five years. Before we started renting kites and canoes out of Soto Falls, no one knew that they could paddle that section of Little River. Only people who knew about it was locals who lived on the river, and that's really who all used it, just a couple of camps and a few locals. You'd never see anybody out on the river. Well, we've, we rent, you know, we have a fleet of 30 boats, and they're booked for every launch, every weekend. People are coming from Huntsville, Atlanta, Chattanooga, um, all over the place, because they love to explore in this area. Our state park has done a great job, and the Canyon Center's done a great job as bringing tourism, but actually having things for people to do when they come is very limited. And so I encourage you, um, all to, to pass the donuts, um, and us build this town, because we have great opportunities for outdoor recreation. Um, I have to turn people away. Uh, there's, there's enough business for more outfitters to come in, um, because we are. We're turning people away. If you wanna come here, they wanna, they want us to take them backpacking, they want us to take them rock climbing, rappelling, and kayaking. And these are things that we can do right here in Fort Payne. They don't have to, you know, necessarily go out to, to lookout, um, or they can, you know? And, um, you know, Johnny, Red, I voted for you both. And, you know, I want, I want you guys to, to make a good decision. And, and I know you will. I know that's why it's, you know, taken, um, a little while to, to continue to talk it over and make sure it's the right choice, but for this city and for, uh, growth in outdoor recreation in this region, I was up yes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? We'll move on. Anybody else up here? Any comments? Okay, we will move right along. Resolutions. Resolution 2017-33, accepting low bid for 424 A plant mix.
Make a motion in a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Uh, resolution 2017-34, authorizing a one-time bonus to the city retirees. Cost to the city would be $49,824, to be paid by an increase in the city's match to retirement system, beginning October the 1st, 2018, through September 30th, 2019.
Okey dokey.
That is a, uh...
One time.
One time from the state retirement system.
Right.
And the city has to...
Right. It's, it's added on to the city's part of the state retirement start in the October.
It's not a call. I believe in this.
No, I'll say, get out your motion.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain being a retired city employee.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Resolution 2017-35, authorizing an assessment to be placed on property located at 302 Rucker Street Northeast, owned by Lowell Austin, for cleanup and removal of debris in the amount of $4,000.
I get motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Uh, new business, a public street light.
36.
Yeah, I had the old one. Okay. 2017-37, authorizing legal action against pharmaceutical companies.
This is, this is what y'all authorized, or Rocky mentioned a minute or two ago.
We had talked about this. We had talked about this before. This is joining basically part of what will ultimately become, I think, nationwide, uh, action in response to the opioid, uh, addiction problems that are taking place nationwide, costing counties, cities, states hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's been, there've been several suits filed already. Uh, we've got several cities in Alabama that are in line to join this action. And it is absolutely no cost to the city. Uh, it's, uh, if, if there are monies recovered, then the city will get their share. If there are no monies recovered, the expenses will be taken care of by the, by the head lawyers, the private, the lawyers that are putting this lawsuit together. So it's a no-lose situation.
I'll make a motion.
Aye.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If this resolution just authorizes that, I've given each of you a copy of the contract for your review before it's actually signed.
Motion carried. Now moving on to new business. Uh, public street light for Julie Muse at the Holiday Inn Express on 112 Airport Road. Randy, you wanna speak to this?
Really dark spot, and with the addition of Applebee's out there, I think those street lights are well needed. Those patrons are gonna be back and forth from, uh, Holiday Inn to Applebee's and other restaurants out there, so it's time.
I, I think it's something that, uh, that, that could be, be very dangerous.
Yes. Okay, got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If this is two lights.
Yes.
Yes.
If I could recommend, Andy put in, they need to install a 160 LED on each of them.
Yes, I put...
160?
Yeah. On, on both of them.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next, the polling place change. The DeKalb County Commission requests permission to change the polling location from the VFW to the city auditorium during the time of the VFW fair.
Scotty, you got anything on that?
This is gonna be all the crowd that are voting fair.
Right, but you don't know what the problem with... About your voting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, presentation of retirees' plaques.
Can't do that. We got Madon Gray, Gray Red Bread, and Mikey Griggs.
Come on up, Paulus. Come down.
So what y'all been waiting for?
See it.
My Griggs. Appreciation of 25 years of dedicated service to the city of Fort Payne and its citizens.
Thank you.
Very much. Appreciation, 25 years of dedicated service.
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciation, 14 years of dedicated service to the city of Fort Payne.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You guys big enough to get us all in?
Wow.
Appreciate you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Facility reservation request. Treaty rate for Saturday, July 29th, reunion at the Roderick Pavilion, approximately 100 to 150 attendees. Good? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, once again, I just, I wanna say I appreciate everybody being here, um, and, and being open, uh, being willing to talk, uh, a- about a really hard subject sometimes. It's not been an easy, um, thought process, uh, in the least. As I said, I don't, I don't think any of us up here is, is, uh, wants to put a burden on our citizens. Uh, we just wanna make things better, uh, and do it in a way that, uh, we're, uh, very cautious about what we do, and how much we spend, and the way we spend it, uh, and, and get the, the most for, for our money, so.
Motion in a juror.
All right, I would li- I would ask that, uh, you all keep the, the Russell family in your prayers tomorrow, uh, as, as Ronnie Russell's laid to rest. Uh, remember his mom and dad.